Mr. Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of Clayton, I call this March 4th, 2024 meeting to order. Let us stand for the pleasure of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Our pledge allegiance to you, my. And to your love. One nation. In the just.
Let us pray. Dear God, our heavenly Father, dear Lord, first and foremost, thank you, Father God, for now to be here another day, dear Lord. As we go forth for the Town of Clayton, let us be about your business and everything that we say and everything that we do. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Let everyone say, amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments tonight, sir.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed. Okay, motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Approved. Next, skipping by administrative items, we have introductions and special presentations. Professional designation of fire officer from the Center for Public Safety and Excellence, Chief Rhimes. We got Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Captain Carter, come on up. So I stand before you this evening with pride as I recognize a distinguished member of the Clayton Fire Department, Captain Chris Carter. Today I have the privilege of acknowledging and celebrating Captain Carter's achievement in receiving the designation as a fire officer from the Commission of on professional credentialing, an entity of the Center for Public Safety Excellence. Captain Carter has exemplified his highest standards of professionalism, dedication, and leadership throughout his tenure in our department. His journey to attain the fire officer designation reflects not only his personal commitment to excellence, but also his unwavering dedication to safety and well-being of our community. The Center for Public Safety Excellence, with its commitment to setting and promoting the highest standards in public safety, has deemed Captain Carter worthy of this prestigious designation. Their rigorous certification process evaluates not only technical knowledge, but also leadership skills and a steadfast commitment to continuous improvement. Captain Carter has successfully navigated these challenging challenges, demonstrating not only his knowledge and expertise, but also his willingness to go above and beyond in serving our community. In his role as fire officer, Captain Carter has not only met, but exceeded the expectations set by this esteemed certification body. His leadership has been instrumental in enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness of our firefighting operations, ensuring the safety of our residents, and contributing to the overall resilience of our community in the face of emergencies. As I congratulate Captain Carter on this well-deserved recognition, let us take a moment to reflect on his impact, on the impact of his achievement. The fire officer designation is not merely a personal accomplishment, it's a testament to Captain Carter's commitment to the highest standards of service and his dedication to the betterment of our community. I would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to Captain Chris Carter for his exemplary service, leadership, and for bringing honor to our community through this recent achievement. We are confident Captain Carter will continue to inspire and lead with the same level of dedication that he has earned him this professional designation. In closing, please join me in recognizing Captain Chris Carter for his exemplary achievement as a fire officer. While I believe that Captain Carter is our first member to receive this designation, I hope that he is not the last, as we set forth the bar for others in the department to follow. Thank you. Captain Carter?
Thank you. I just, so I got a special place for individuals in uniform, of course, so extremely happy, excited, and look forward to everything that you're going to bring to the Clayton Fire Department. Can you guys get a photo? Yeah. Chief doesn't, Mayor doesn't usually do those. Next up, we have National Women's History Month. Councilman Casey.
I'd like to read this proclamation, Town of Clayton proclamation, National Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month is a dedicated month to reflect on women's contributions to United States history, and whereas National Women's History Month traces its roots back to March 8th, 1857, when women from various New York City factories staged a protest over poor working conditions, and whereas the National Women's History Alliance designates a yearly theme for Women's History Month, the 2024 theme is Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, recognizing women, past and present, who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blog, podcast, news, and social media. And whereas today, we continue to provide guidance on many issues facing women, including health and wellness, violence against women, education and employment, and youth development. And whereas, the Town of Clayton joins in honoring the legacy of women of every race, class, and ethnic background who changed the world by contributing to the economic, cultural, and social development of our state in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And now, therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton, we hereby proclaim March 1st through the 31st, 2024 National Women's History Month. Proclaimed this 18th day of March 2024. And we'd like to have Joy Garrison to come up and talk about an event that the library's having to help promote this.
Thank you, Councilman Casey. I'm excited to announce that we are hosting Trailblazing Women of Clayton, a Women's History Celebration. It will be right here in the council chambers on Saturday, March 16th at 2:00. You can go find information about it on our website. We're also posting about it on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter. So we hope you'll all join us. We'll actually have actors or actresses portraying four different women in Clayton's history. So it's going to be a great event, and we're doing it with the help of the Clayton Historical Association. So we're really excited. Pam Taylor, library associate, is putting the program together. She couldn't be here tonight, but we're very grateful for the proclamation and excited to host that program.
I'd like to say that besides every great man or every man is an outstanding woman, and that's nowhere evident in here in our town council, our town staff. So I'm going to ask for Dolores and all our council, female council members, if they can join me down front for a picture. You too, Joyce, just with the proclamation.
Not you.
Okay. You look great. Not with the gleam. Okay, and then let's take like two steps that way. Okay. Can we all shift this way a little bit? Yep. Yeah, that's great. Ready, one, two, three. Okay, so, thank you.
Alrighty, next up, we had a 2024-2025 Sculpture Trail Selection. Ms. Pericone.
Thank you. Good evening, I'd say mayor, but Michael, council and staff. It's my pleasure tonight to bring you up to date on the sculpture trail. And actually, on March, the Friday, the March 15th, and Friday, March 22nd, there will be sculptures that'll be taken down, the current ones, and new ones put up. So it'll be kind of going back and forth a little bit that year. The reason that happens is because some of the artists that we have exhibiting this year, we have also been chosen for this upcoming year. And so it's easier for them to come in and do it at that time. Our very first installation, and I'll tell you, is thanks to the Lees here, Hubert and Bonnie. They have allowed us to put one out right by the West End Shopping Center, right across from there. So you will see it up here, but, and she was also on the selection committee, so she found out how difficult that is, but fun. So, oh, good, thank you. Be patient with me. I've never used this thing before, and it's not moving. Am I doing something wrong? Should I try it now? Okay, it's gonna go to all of them at once. No, it's not. You want to just scroll it for me? All right, you can start with the first one. The first one is going to be located out at the entrance to the medical park, and this is, if you want to scroll it up there, Caprielle. This is, we have a new exhibitor, a new artist this year. Her name is Jessica Bradshaw, and she's from Greenville, North Carolina. And so this one is quite a big one at 12 feet, and it also sits on a pedestal out there. So it is, it's really an awesome piece. Now, the next one is a little unusual, but as you know at the roundabout, we have to have a very big piece and a noticeable piece. What's going to be fun about this one is we don't know what it's going to look like yet at night because it has sunlights, or solar lights, excuse me, on it. So it will be partially shining at night, and then it's with some glass. He is quite an interesting guy. Harry is another new one for us this year, and he's from Asheville, North Carolina. We ended up, now, we had a lot of applicants from across the whole East Coast, but by chance, because the committee picked them, is that we only have two out of state this year. All the rest are North Carolinas, so that's pretty cool. The next one is going to be out at the West End Shopping Center, and this is, this one's a big one, 15 feet. This is the one that Hubert and Bonnie are going to have out there, and there's March 15th at 9:00 in the morning, okay, will be out there. And this is kinetic because the inside part of this rotates when the wind blows, all right? So it's going to be very colorful. It's right near Clark's mural there with the sunflowers and the tractor. Thank you. Anyway, the next one is going to be in Town Square. It's going to sit at the corner of Main and Fayetteville. This is a nine-foot piece. Now, actually, the guy that you just saw the sculpture, Hannah Jabron, we usually have one of his each year because they're so colorful, but this happens to be his too. So if you take a look at his Three Planets one, that's going to be out at the West End, and then you see this, it's quite different. So it's kind of fun to see that Hannah's doing another style this year. So it's a big one. It's the nine foot. The next one is Rising Spirits. This is a really beautiful piece. This is a nine-and-a-half-foot piece. This will be on the corner of Main and O'Neill. So people sitting right at the stoplight there, and when the shine, the sun shines on this, it's going to be really spectacular. And that's again from Harry, from Asheville. Now, Prismatic Cyclone, the next one. All right, this is a, this will be at Horn Square, on the Lombard side where the flat, where Valkyrie was, there's a pad down below. That's where the swing was of Jack's swing. This is where that will be. And this actually moves with the wind. When the wind blows, this moves. It's a really fantastic piece. Now, the next one is actually two, two different horses, you've noticed. They're going to be in Town Square. If you remember where we had Jim Galucci's bench there along the side, right, it's along the side of Fayetteville. Both of those horses are going to be on that pad. So it's going to be really a neat look. So we're actually going to have three pieces in Town Square this year. This is repurposed steel. Now, Joy can see this one because, as always, we ask him to pick something fun for the kids at the library. And Jason Morris always comes through. So if we could have the next one, please. There he is. There's Country Swine Airline. And he is, he's a big one. He's 10 feet tall. This is a big sculpture, but it doesn't look that big because he isn't as heavy looking with that. But the kids are going to love the Country Swine. He is a lot of fun. At least I hope the library likes him too. The next one is Horn Square. It's going to be steel and paint. It's called Remix. And Joni Yunkins-Herzog was in our last year's show. She had the, it looked like the Christmas Story leg that was in Horn Square. Well, this is her, this will be on the center, right there by Main Street, sitting on Main Street this year, in the center. All right, the next one will be at the Community Center. And this is another one. This is Glenn Zweigert of New York. This is his third piece that we, that's been chosen for his. So he's been in all three years. And he loves it down here. He brings his wife and his dogs every time. And so he just makes himself right home in Clayton, and he loves it. So that's going to be out at the Community Center. Now, this one, the next one's going to be right out here in front, and it's called New Dawn. It's eight feet tall, and it's, this is from Sam Spitska from Apex, right here near us. So that's going to be an interesting one. They really chose some interesting ones this year. And I'm not to say anything, and that's really hard, as you all know, but the only thing I asked them for is I do say something about the library, and I do tell them that we need three large pieces because we really do. Other than that, they chose some really, I think, great pieces, and it was hard because there are a lot of that were left. The next one is going in the back left pedestal, actually where the leg was. This is going to be sitting there. This is Adam Walls. Now, Adam, this is very different because the first piece you ever saw of Adam Walls was the car. Couple years ago, we had the car out by the library, the red one, which we thought all the kids would get in, and we found out there were more adults getting in and having their picture taken than the kids, which is great. That's, that's what we want. We want interactive. So that worked out terrific. Now, the last one, Mr. High There, actually has been with us all year. The next one? Is he up there? There he is. Okay. Now, he was in Horn Square this year. Now, Steve moved to the Midwest, so he asked us to keep Mr. High There for the year at no cost. So what we're doing with Mr. High There is we're moving him to the library, to where the little flowers are out there. So he'll be waving to the kids every time he goes into the library. It's really cute. His heart can be seen from every angle that you see. So I congratulate the committee that did a great job, I think, for picking all of these. And so on March 22nd, they will be, the last of them will be in, and you'll be able to go and see them. We'll be doing something a little bit different this year, too. We're going to be offering tours to whomever groups that would like tours. We'll take them on the tours and explain everything. I've done it several years with a couple other groups, and now we'll be training a couple of the other Public Art Advisory Board members, and we're all looking forward to, to doing that. It is really a fun experience. Heidi? Okay, so that's for the Sculpture Trail. There's one thing I have to just show you tonight, guys, because I think it's pretty exciting. I asked Heidi to hand this out because this just showed up on NBC News in Chicago, all right? This is the U.S. Olympic and Paralympic Committee on Wednesday officially unveiled the Team USA House for Paris for the 2024 Olympic, Olympic and Paralympic Games. Now, it's, if that's the building right there, it's all going to be held in. Now, what it does, it houses and with experience, the Team USA athlete experiences. There will be interactive activities for the visitors or sponsors or whatever. It's a very prestigious building. Now, the one thing that is fairly experienced is that there's been, a person in this town was called personally to run that whole building, to direct it for the Olympics, for the USA. They called her personally and asked, would you go there? So speaking of prestigious, this is a very prestigious opportunity that she's been given. And I don't, I think Porter knows her, but she happens to sit on the Public Art Advisory Board, and her name, hey, Portis, is, you remember who I'm talking about? Who am I talking about? Kristen Ryan. She, when she came and interviewed, she lives in town, when she came and interviewed for a position here, we were, Joni and I were blown away with her background because her background is she has done extensive work, marketing work for not only the hurricanes, but IBM, and I can't even tell you how many. This is how well-known she is. Now, nobody knew how well-known she is. I did. But this is an example of who we have sitting on the Public Art Advisory Board. So this is, she will be in Paris all summer, and what an awful place to have to spend your summer. I feel so bad for her. But anyway, I think that is a really neat thing to have someone like that on your board and representing Clayton. So that will be, you know, a part of Clayton that will be going to Paris. And she'll be, that's something that I think people need to know, is that, you know, there's a big name out there from Clayton. You'd never know it. She won't talk about it. She's very, but anyway, I just wanted you all to know about that and what, what she has brought to the committee. And when she talks about marketing things for the Public Art Advisory Board or for the Town of Clayton, for the art, we listen because she's got some incredible background and ideas. So thank you all very much. I know you're going to enjoy that, and you'll see Kristen at our next Public Art Advisory Board. She doesn't leave till, I think, the end of May or June, so.
Any comments from the council?
First off, I want to say I'm proud to be liaison to the Public Art Advisory Board. Sarah, I really do appreciate your leadership and your passion for this. It truly shows. And you, you know, you helped the whole community. You helped the council. You helped the staff to understand the importance of this. I appreciate the board, too. We have a phenomenal board, to your point. You know, bringing this public art to the community, people appreciate it. It differentiates us from other communities, and it shows. And I just want to thank you once again for what you do and your group and what they do for the community. Appreciate. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. But as you, if you've met the Public Art Advisory Board, we are a team. I may have chair name, but my best thing that I do on the board with all these other smart and talented people is I find those smart and talented people to be on there. And so I, you know, I thank you from the board because the board absolutely loves what it does. And Kristen isn't the only one that has an unbelievable background, but I just want to highlight that because that is such a unique experience, and that's from somebody picked all across the United States. They couldn't have picked anybody. But she's the one that they chose, and that's, her qualifications are just amazing. But I thank you, and I thank you from the board because we do love it, and we do really enjoy having you as our liaison. So thank you for the Town of Clayton, for putting liaisons on our board because we have a fantastic one, and we thank you for that. So, and Porter and I have been working on a couple of things that Porter will be telling you about pretty soon. So we're pretty excited about that, too. So thank you very much.
Any other counsel? Sarah, I just wanted to say, in the absence of the mayor because he's big time arts, which I am also to some extent, and I had the pleasure of selecting some of the past sculptures, looking forward to this one. Still going to miss the Christmas Story, Christmas leg, the leg, or whatever is going to be out there, but looking forward to this. And as Echo Porter's comment, appreciate your passion for this and what it brings to Clayton. Thank you.
Well, I do have passion. Sometimes that drives people nuts, but when you have a passion, you do go after it, don't you? And you, you fight for what you think it would be good. So I try to fight in the very nicest way possible, as my mother always told me to be gracious, but I do. And I thank you for that because we, we do, we are your board, and we do it, and we try to do it in a respectful way that you can be proud of what's out there and what people can see. So I thank you very much for that. The board thanks you very much for that.
Thank you very much. Next up, under a public hearing, we have public hearing 2023-185-RZ, Southern Wake, Southern Wake Property Group rezoning. Southern Wake Property Group rezoning.
Good evening, council. My name is Stephen Mott. I'm a planner, too, here with the town. Tonight, I'm going to present to Southern Wake Property Group rezoning project number The applicant has requested to rezone this .53 acre parcel from, uh, so the application came in in 2023 before the adoption of the UDO. So this would, uh, the application reflected residential estate to industrial light. But the zoning designation that it would take on due to the adoption of the UDO is light industrial or LID. The existing use of the property is a vacant single-family home, and it is located at 4,008 Palton Road, here in Clayton. So you can see there on the aerial, some, right off of US 70 Business West. Uh, here you can see in the current zoning map, it's sort of surrounded by, hmm. There you go. Surrounded by industrial light with some, uh, commercial, some B3 or corridor commercial, as well as a little bit of RE and some O and I. Um, and here are the, uh, to the right is the zoning designation, sort of exchange for the UDO with the new designations coming after, uh, for example, I1 is now light industrial, et cetera. Uh, in regards to consistency and compatibility with our future land use map, it is slated to be employment center uses in this that are encouraged are industrial, warehouse, office, R and D, technology, hospital, renewable energy, recycling, fabrication, assembly, et cetera. So we do find that the, um, light industrial zoning is compatible. Looking at the Conference of Growth Plan 2045, there are goals and policies that align with this rezoning as well. Uh, first goal, land use one, or LU1, preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU 1.3, encourage non-residential land uses in areas consistent with the future land use map. And policy LU 1.4, encourage new businesses and non-residential development and employment centers designated on the future land use map. One thing to consider is that the approval of the rezoning would allow any permitted use within the LID zoning district, formerly I1, to be constructed onsite. Town council should consider all potential uses of the site prior to rendering a decision. That being said, uh, this did go before Planning Board. They voted unanimously to recommend approval, and planning staff also recommends approval for the proposed rezoning request. Uh, here's the consistency statement. Following our recommendation, there's also a sheet, um, that displays different sort of options, um, with consistency, um, approval with consistency, disapproval with consistency, disapproval within consistency, and approval within consistency. Believe I covered all four of the bases. With that being said, the applicant is here. Uh, if you have any questions, and staff, as always, is present for your questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff? We'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Donnie Adams, professional engineer with Adams &amp; Hodge Engineering, 314 East Main Street, here in Clayton. My firm is the engineers, we're the engineers and the planners on this project. As, as staff pointed out, this is little green speck in the middle, a lot of purple. We're asking you to make it all purple. Think it's consistent, the purple being the, the light industrial. Think it's consistent, uh, public utilities are there, and there's no degradation or impact to the adjacent properties. Again, we'll be in, uh, asking to be zoned consistent with that. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have of me.
Any questions, counsel? This has been noted as a public hearing. I'm gonna open this, uh, to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this subject matter, please step forward and state your name for the record. Alrighty. Well, that's easy. All right. Gonna close this part and turn it over to counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would just like to say I find the proposed LID zoning consistent with the surrounding area. Um, in addition, I find the application to be consistent with all seven rezoning criteria listed in the staff report.
I don't stand, do I have a motion?
Okay, sure. I'll go ahead and do a motion.
Or adoption of ordinance.
Sure. I would like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-02-04, along with the consistency and reasonableness statement.
Second. Got a second. We're gonna have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed. Next up, we have the station at Old Town Hall Economic Development Agreement.
My apologies.
You're fine. You're fine.
All right. Very good. Good evening. I'm Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director with the Town of Clayton. Excited to be here today to talk about redevelopment of Old Town Hall. This has been in the works for a while now, and we're finally, uh, very excited to bring the development team here, who we will introduce here at the end of my presentation. Uh, but they're all sitting here to the left, so very excited to have them here. Uh, both the development, the developers as well as the operators. So, um, quick overview, we'll just, uh, make sure everyone understands the property, kind of how we got here, uh, kind of quick overview and timeline, the overview of requirements, um, overview of the incentives used here, um, some of the safeguards there, and then any questions for staff. And then I'll turn it over to the development team to make a presentation. So here is the beloved Old Town Hall, um, at 231 East Second Street, just down the street here. It was built in 1925. It was an all-in-one. If you've ever been, had the chance to get inside there, there's the remnants of the old jail in the upstairs. You can see where, uh, where the diocese used to sit, all the, all the different facilities. Um, when everything moved over here, there's also the fire station that was in, in the basement, um, so had really an all-in-one town hall. It is a contributing structure to the Clayton Historic District. It's 1,200, uh, or 12,500 square feet and sits on about, uh, .2 acres. Uh, its current state, it's windowless, it's vacant shell with a little bit of a leaky roof, not too bad, though, but a little bit, no windows. So part of our interest in getting a developer in here is to make sure we can bring this thing back to life and really see it be a catalytic part. And I appreciate your guidance in, and say, the RFP that was put out there, um, to get us to this point. So there was a previous attempt, uh, several years ago, to redevelop this. Um, the town ended up back with the building. There was a condition study that was done that looked like just a minimum investment was gonna be about $820,000 to bring that facility back up, um, just to stabilize it. Uh, at that point, an RFP went out. We reviewed those. Been working with this development team that rose to the top, and now we've got this economic development agreement here. So with that agreement, um, the project overview, again, you've got local developers, local operators. Um, the main floor will be a kind of artisan market and grocery. The upstairs will be transformed into office space, and the basement will be a combination of a food and beverage concept, as well as some storage and common areas that make up the balance of, um, of that square footage there. So it'd be an exciting commercial opportunity for downtown. So the timeline, just here, have some building improvements coming up in a few months. We'll have Phase One, that'll be, be that stabilization here within the next year. By the end of 2025, really have the main part of it, uh, the main part of the, um, of the area, the grocery and artisan market up, um, up and running. The upstairs will be in, uh, partially finished space, and downstairs will be cleaned up, but really still in a cold, dark shell. That next phase will be to bring the upstairs, um, into condition and occupancy. And then at the end of the five-year period of this agreement, will be to really have that full building up and running and alive and back into purpose. So from a developer standpoint, the purchase price here is $300,000. Uh, there's a minimum $1.75 million investment here. It has to conform to historic property rehabilitation standards that are in the agreement, and create a minimum of 20 jobs for 12 months after reaching 80% occupancy. From the town standpoint, there's an economic development incentive grant. There's a economic development historic structure rehabilitation reimbursement grant. And, um, you know, best efforts in working with them to meet their necessary in terms of easements and assistance to make the progress, the project come to life, as well as ensure that utilities are provided to the site. So tax incentives are a common piece of any economic development tool. And again, they're used to encourage, um, a variety of different projects. And here, this is downtown redevelopment, and obviously the preservation of a very important historic structures. So these are governed by the, uh, General Statute 158-7.1, and allows local governments to use incentives and grants to, um, increase taxable property, grow employment, and improve local business prospects, which this is very much in alignment with. So the economic developments grant starts at the beginning of Phase Two, or I'm sorry, the completion of Phase Two. It runs for seven years, and it's 50% of the Admiral Arm tax value. It's somewhere less than probably $50,000 is the total grant amount. There's also the rehabilitation grant here, which are qualifying, qualifying expenditures. Uh, most of that will be working really on the building, the roof, the elevator. Um, and that's basically until those, um, grant funds are exhausted. So again, taxpayer safeguards, always important when you're doing grants, to make sure, while we have, you know, bathed and worked really, really closely with this development team, I always want to make sure that the worst-case scenario, so both are, again, per law, reimbursements of taxes already paid, not on, um, there's no upfront, this is all, again, reimbursements of taxes or funds already spent. If, for some reason, there's a default in the agreement, the EDIG, the Economic Development Incentive Grant can be, um, uh, canceled. Repayment of that rehabilitation would be required if the minimums are not met. You know, assuming if something was to happen, and construction wasn't commence in time, and by that, the town would come back to the property after closing. And then the town also has, over the period of the agreement, first right of refusal upon the sale of the property. So lots of ways that, um, worst-case scenario, we're covered. But again, this, we're really excited about this project and think they put a great vision together for it. So in conclusion, this is a, again, a project that everyone, I know I talked to, is excited to see come back to life. Um, add, you know, love seeing the adaptive reuse work that's happened across downtown, and this will be another great example of that. Um, commercial space that we've seen in the drafts of our downtown master plan, uh, which is forthcoming, really show a need and an opportunity to absorb more commercial space in the downtown. Obviously takes it out of town ownership and puts it back into private ownership, which, um, puts it back on the tax scrolls. And again, there's those strong taxpayer protections on the incentives, which are all good. So our recommendation would be to approve the resolution before you, which would approve the economic development, um, agreement. With that, I will take any questions, and then I will let the development team come up and make their presentation, but want to cover any questions you all have at this moment.
Any questions for Patrick? We will hear from the applicant.
Yeah. So I will invite up here, Kevin and Carrie Lee are the development team here. And then Kristi Thompson, Erin, Nanny are the operators. So I'll hand it over to Kevin first, and I'll get your presentation loaded up.
Thank you. Use this device, sir?
Yes.
Big white button, advance. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of Clayton Town Council and staff. My name is Kevin Lee. Here with me is my wife, Carrie, and children, Henry and Evelyn. Also joining us are my parents, Hubert and Bonnie, um, which have developed several projects here in Clayton and have inspired and supported us to do the same. I am a Clayton native, and we, as a family, have called Second Street home since October of 2013, 2013. Today, we are thrilled to present a proposal that is close to home and brings new life to our neighboring Old Town Hall. We know this has been a long and purposeful journey to get to this day. Through faithfulness and persistence, we are here. We thank you for your patience and going through the process. Has made us even more dedicated to this project. This proposal seeks your approval for an economic development agreement that will enable the renovation of the historical Old Town Hall with an estimated investment of $1.75 million. The overall renovation will include a blend of concept, a blended concept of a market, restaurant, and office space. Kristi and Erin will provide the exciting details of the concept, conceptual in just a bit. I'm gonna share an overview of the building and renovation plans, um, here on the slide. So the Old Town Hall has stood at the heart of Clayton since 1925. Uh, the Old Town Hall holds a special place in Clayton's history, serving as the library, courthouse, fire department, police department, and several, and even a small jail. However, time has taken its toll, and the building now sits underutilized and untapped. Our envision, um, is a twofold approach. Rehabilitation and preservation of the building's historic character, and cultivation of the space for new business to thrive in the heart of downtown Clayton. On this slide are a few pictures of its existing conditions today and historically. The exterior will remain the same with cosmetic improvements, including, uh, masonry point-up, uh, window installation, painting, and a new roof. Also, a new elevator will be installed per ADA standards. Believe it or not, this building has five different changes and levels of elevation. Uh, we want to make sure everyone has access to these amazing spaces. All of this is part of Phase One work that Patrick mentioned, and will be completed on or before March 30th of 2025. Also have some drawn footage here, just the, the roof level. So creatively, we're gonna be inserting a modular elevator into this space to accommodate the ADA requirement. So hopefully, that'll be a, a big effort to watch here in the town. Uh, I think it'll be a first, uh, here. So next here on these slides, you will see the existing conditions of the interior of the main space, uh, this grand room, which, uh, served as a courthouse, and is my favorite part of the building, has industrial trusses that we intend to showcase by removing the ceiling and exposing the 1x6 roof decking. Uh, the brick and plaster walls will be preserved and sealed, adding to the charm of the space and highlighting the original features. The improvements of this space is part of the Phase Two development per the EDA. Um, and we anticipate the work being completed on or before December 30. we anticipate the work being completed on or before December 31st of 2025. Next slide's here. I want to point out, to Patrick's point, the old jail cells, you can see kind of the metal in the floor and on the far-right picture. This is the upper level of the building, the highest elevation. This area has flexible opportunities and is part of the Phase Three, and is planned to be in service on or before December 31st of 2026. Also on this slide to the top left, you'll see the Barber Street view, which is the garage area. The garage doors will be modernized with glass frontage. The space has high potential for a restaurant or cafe, and will conclude as the final phase of the project, Phase Four, completed within five years of the execution of the economic development agreement. Although the EDA states the dates mentioned previously, our goal as developer and operator, owner-operator, is to have all phases developed and the building in service as soon as possible pending commitment and creative partners for the enjoyment of the town. This time, I just wanted to acknowledge the development team that's partnered with us, the financial partner, KS Bank, specifically Jeff Harper, architect Tony Johnson, L&amp;A Structural, and Killian Engineering. We're all going to partner as a team to produce the construction plans and hopefully get it before the town for building permit review and approval. All right. So now I just want to pause for a minute to thank everyone that has been part of this process, and to acknowledge the collaboration that the town of Clayton has promoted by putting out the RFP. We are honored to be selected for this opportunity to develop such a memorable location that will be inviting to the citizens of Clayton and beyond. We're, in essence, bringing people home. I've remodeled two houses here on Second Street and hold this area in high regard. We all sit on our porches and dream to bring the Old Town Hall back to life. By voting in favor of this proposal, you would be allowing the dream to become a reality. We hope the board votes in favor of moving this project forward, and thank you. Just want to turn it over to Kristi and Erin now at this time.
Hi, guys. Good evening. I'm Bren's community members, town staff, Patrick, all of our team around us, and Mayor Protem, Michael. My name is Kristi Thompson.
Do you know how to do this?
I can. Okay, good. My name is Kristi Thompson, and I'm here tonight with my business partner, Erin Neney. We're currently the owners of two local businesses here in downtown, Three Little Birds, which is vastly approaching nine years, and La Di Da Wine Shop. We want to first extend our full appreciation to town staff, the development team, and everyone who's contributed to this project, given their feedback and guided us along the way. This has been a challenging project. It has proven to have some tackles and some obstacles in front of us, and no one has given up on us, and we are appreciative of that. We are so ready to bring this gem back to our community. So paying homage to its roots in our community, we'd like to present the anticipated business in place, and that would be called the station. Our goal is to utilize this entire building as much as possible to create a multi-tenant experience that would have a food and beverage component, a market for customers to source locally grown goods, a retail and potential office space. We feel confident with our vast knowledge of our community needs and the demands of everyone around us. We'll have a strong offering of goods and services that will drive economic growth, add employment opportunities, and also keep valued customers supporting and shopping in downtown Clayton. Our role as owners of the business in place is to keep the integrity of the building and make sure that the businesses are upheld throughout that entire process. I'll turn it over now to my lovely business partner, Erin, to give more detail on the look at the vision. Okay?
All right, so I'm kind of going to get into the details of what each level looks like for us. On the bottom level, it's up to 3,000 square feet. On the lower level is slated to support a full restaurant, eatery, or a food and beverage establishment. So you can see that here in this plan, that this is the lower level. Keeping with the historical integrity, we plan to feature the roll-up doors and the space, and maximize the space, offering to allow one tenant to occupy the full space. So in addition to this area, this is kind of a rendering that we have showing you the roll-up doors and what that could look like as an eatery or a restaurant. And in addition to this area, we'll have public access points to a common lobby, and elevators, and public restrooms. Just shy of 4,200 square feet, this open market concept on the middle floor will offer the most flexibility and potential for multi-tenant lease space. Our goal is to have a vast offering of market goods and services available through individual merchants. Some of the anticipated offerings would include a deli, a bakery, a butcher, a bottle shop, seafood, florists, just really an overall market experience that has local goods. We plan to source this with local businesses to occupy the space that offer their goods and services to our With an offering of just over 1,100 square feet in the upper space, it can be occupied from anywhere from one to three tenants. This could be an office suite, or it could also be multi-retail tenants or service providers. So the third level shown here is an office space in our rendering. It's definitely not limited to that, and it has endless potential. Keeping with the integrity of the business model, we'd like to see that every tenant will drive traffic to the others to create a full experience for anyone who visits the station. As a team together, Kevin, as a team together, we are super excited for this project, the opportunities that it brings to downtown Clayton. Not only are we passionate about the beautification of the property, but we're also extremely optimistic about the positive impact that it'll have on our economic growth, the community, and the development of downtown Clayton. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Any questions? Questions? All right. You guys are good. So this has been noted as a public hearing, and I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this subject matter, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, and we'll turn this over to town council for discussion.
Okay. I just want to say, as we initially started down this process, gosh, it feels like it's been, what, two and a half years ago, two years ago? As much as we wanted to keep this building, it just didn't make sense. It was too costly, and it was just inefficient for us. So this proposal was exactly what we were looking for. We were looking for something that would be invested into the community, that would be open to the community, and the community would go and be able to enjoy. And just seeing what y'all presented is what we asked for. This is what the community has asked for. This is something that the community can continue to enjoy. There's going to be no closed doors during the day. It's going to be an open, open space. It's going to reflect the history of the town. It's going to reflect the history of the building, and we just appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to the progress. I'm excited to see it get started as soon as it can.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for the overall commitment to this. I make no bones about it, not from here. So some of the things that we on the council talked about, as far as from a heritage and the knowing from the town hall, I don't have that same attachment. With that being said, there were a lot of individuals here that was extremely passionate about this, just like yourselves. I think this is a direct reflection of showing what we can do to, as we work together here in Clayton. No matter what issue is, we can work together to get it figured out from both ends. You guys made a lot of different sacrifices. We have too. I think in everything that we do, we should continue to look at that, because at the end of the day, according to these slides, we're going to be able to bring something really exciting to Clayton. So I hope you guys continue to do that as we do the different things here in Clayton. With that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-16.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion passed. Next up, we have a quasi-judicial hearing on 2023-146 SUP Powtan Self-Storage. I'm going to ask our attorney for the sake of, we haven't had one in a while, and also with our new members up here, if you could just kind of give us a quick brief on the quasi-judicial, please.
Yes, sir. As you know, these are called quasi-judicial or evidentiary hearings. They are due process hearings under law, which makes them different from, for example, the rezoning that you had on tonight's agenda, where those are considered legislative matters. With a due process proceeding, you are limited to the evidence that's presented at the hearing. You are bound by procedural rules. Witnesses are sworn, for example, and evidence about certain subjects is required to be presented, in some cases, by only expert witnesses. For example, property valuation questions, engineering issues can only be presented through persons who have the credentials to do that. So council sits, as much like judges in a court of law, you hear the evidence that's presented, and you render a decision based on that evidence, determining whether it meets the criteria and the ordinance.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I'm going to ask anyone who's going to be a part of this to get sworn in. I'm going to turn this over to the town clerk.
Those wishing to offer testimony tonight, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? When you step up to offer testimony, if you would, please sign the oath sheet. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council. Again, my name is Stephen Maugh, Planner II. I'm here to present Powtan Self-Storage Special Use Permit, case number 2023146 SUP. I did notice, I tried to make this map a little bit stretched out so you could see it a little better, but the approximate public notice sign locations got moved. One is right here next to the ingress, egress to the site, and the other is located here at the center point of the adjacent parcel. The request is to allow the expansion of the existing self-storage unit, excuse me, self-storage use to build a 450, sorry, 4,500 square foot addition to the existing structure, in addition to a freestanding three-story, 78,000-square-foot climate-controlled self-storage building. The property size is approximately 3.38 acres, and location is at 3986 and 3936 Powtan Road. Here is the associated site plan. This is for information purposes only. This has been reviewed and approved by TRC. As you can see, the date information is incorrect. I believe it was actually in February of 2024, so my apologies there. As you can see on this site, the existing, I just want to point out this detail you all, the existing zoning for the vast majority of the site is B3, in which this use is allowed through special use permit within our former code. The application came in during the jurisdiction of that code. I do want to highlight that the small area delineated by this line is zoned as RE. However, the use will not be present on that zoning designation. So it would be all within the B3 usage, or B3 zoning district. Within the comprehensive plan, this is an employment center, which is consistent with the future of land use designation, calling for industrial, warehouse, office, research and development, tech flex, hospital, renewable energy, recycling, fabrication, assembly, and technology uses. And surrounding, you see a lot of I1, I2, or LID and HID for the new UDO zoning designations, in which this would be an allowed use. In those zoning designations, to the south, there's a B3 as well, is I1, and some RE, though. The motion earlier for the rezoning was at this parcel, so that would also be I1, for your consideration. To the west, the other B3 parcel is gas station retail, and here is a chemical wholesaler. So for considerations for this special use permit, you shall make the final decisions regarding the special use permit. The special use permit shall address specific findings of fact. The burden of the proof is on the applicant. These findings must be met for a special use permit to be approved, and town councils shall consider the recommendations in this staff report, and may approve the SUP with their proposed conditions, add or remove conditions with the agreement of the applicant, deny the application upon finding that one or more findings of fact are not met, or may send the application back to the technical review committee for additional consideration. Outlined here, the four findings of fact, I do want to show the staff recommended conditions of approval, which have already been signed by the applicant, which you have in your packet. First of which is the development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the special use permit as approved by the Clayton Town Council and associated site plan as approved by town staff, and any conditions imposed as part of the site plan approval shall remain in effect. We'll just go back to the findings of fact here, where the applicant is, again, responsible
Any questions for staff? You're an advocate.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Bart McLean. I'm a professional engineer, the project engineer for this project. I have worked with William G. Daniel and Associates for 32 years. I've been a professional engineer for 27. I've been a professional engineer for 27. I just wanted to point out that also with me here today is Adam Gerald, the property owner and developer, and also the developer, Will Clevenger, representing for architecture and development. If you have any questions, we have worked closely with the town to come up with a site plan that is appropriate, that the town wanted. We've responded to every comment and suggestion that the town has. This project will reduce impervious area on the existing site, which will in turn improve downstream runoff and runoff from the property. We will be adding landscaping. A very nice looking building. I'm not sure how to flip through this to get to the plans. Let's see if I go backwards or forwards.
Steve, you didn't have to get to the, I wanted to bring up the rendering.
Which was in the package itself? You don't have to, if you can. I thought it was in the packet. Oh, okay. You all probably already have a copy of the rendering in the, in time. Okay. Well, that's fine. We are here to answer any questions that you may have. So, thank you for your time.
Hang on a second. Got a question here.
I was just gonna, obviously, I have read the staff report, and I was just wondering if for the record, if you could just describe the construction that's planned. It looks to be a pretty consistent expansion of what's currently there, storage. So I was just hoping you could give us a statement about, about the consistency of that with the current use. Oh, sure. So the proposed construction, if you could talk about how it's consistent with the current use? Yeah.
The property right now is American self-storage, self-storage facility. These, the new building and the expansion of the one existing building will be all indoor, climate-controlled. No exterior access, if I'm not mistaken, to any of the buildings. It'll just provide it a different product from what's there right now, just to make it a full self-storage facility with external storage, internal storage.
Excellent, thank you. Just wanting to make it clear that it's, it's in addition to an existing use that is already currently storage. So thank you.
Yes, it's already there. I think Steve's getting close. Mike, I think was it?
Councilman Casey.
Appreciate the clarification. I guess typically when we do a quasi judicial or any type of hearing, the applicant has like a presentation because some people sometimes don't necessarily go and look at the agenda. So it's not going to influence my decision, I of course, because it's quasi judicial, but I would just suggest in the future, some sort of rendering or presentation that can kind of help the community know what we're exactly voting on.
You want to take a look at the rendering? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and just a little bit more clarification about the project.
That's the future rendering for the project. That shows the standalone three-story building and the addition on the left-hand side.
I mean, yeah, I'm good. I just typically it's a finding of fact, so typically the applicant goes to each one of the findings of fact to make the decision. I know it's in our applicant packet, but typically we go through it during the hearing. So everyone sees that we are agreeing and we agree with the findings of fact for the proposal.
Them in? Is that what he says? Some of this stuff. Right, do I need to read them in? It's up to you, sir. The findings of fact.
He wants you, in essence, he wants, he wants you to go through them as far as how it applies to you all. You're fine. He wants you to go through them, how it applies to you all, each one, each finding of fact.
It's fine if you want to introduce yourself.
Whatever you want.
And two or anything you'd like to speak on.
That sounds great. Hi, my name is Adam Gerald. I'm the owner, and I can go through kind of the, the findings and go through this project. Appreciate your patience with me. If I'm a little nervous or speak too quickly, feel free to slow me down. So the first part of the application is that it doesn't materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved. And so, you know, our contention is that it won't affect public safety or health or safety in any way. That agrees with the planning department's recommendation as well. The second finding is that the application meets all required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use, planning and meet, and the town code of ordinances and other applicable regulations. And so this does meet all town code ordinances and applicable regulations as submitted and approved. Plus, it's an extension, it's an expansion of an existing use that's already at the property. Third is that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. So it's my contention that, you know, this, the majority of the adjoining parcels are light industrial, heavy industrial, B3, and that this won't impact that, again, kind of going back to the expansion of existing use. Number four is that the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character or of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. So again, it's my contention that this finding is met. I think in fact that the expansion will probably enhance the existing parcel. Again, the landscaping, there'll be better landscaping buffers, both on the Powhatan Road section as well as behind the property, plus the reduction in impervious surface. So I think this is, you know, one of those cases where it's a win-win all the way around.
Thank you for doing that. I think it gives the audience and people watching at home a lot more clarity on the project. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good, really good. Okay, thank you. This has been noted as a quasi judicial hearing. Do we have anybody here for rebuttal? No one? There's any, you're gonna need to swear in. You didn't swear, you're gonna need to, the town clerk's gonna have to swear you in. Just stand up so she can, so she can swear you in right quick.
If you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you. If you'll sign in at the sheet up front.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Betty Fagan, 200 Newbury Drive in Clayton. Hi, everybody. The question that I have is the concern about the travel that we're going to be doing on the roadway, where all of this is going to be coming to the road as far as people going in and out. With the, all the additional things that are being discussed, that are going to be built for the community, surrounding communities, the plan, the master plan from the town for parking and for driving and getting from one place to another. There's a lot of activity that's going to be going on between Vincent Road and Powhatan Road and Glen Laurel. I just wanted to ask about the concern about that from the board, from the council, because we live on this part of Clayton, and the roads are already packed. And I just see that we're never going to be moving anywhere. The cars, there's just so many cars and just so little road. And I know that the town of Clayton is not responsible for the roads that the county is. This just to me is very overwhelming, not this particular building, but the roadways that bring us to these buildings and to our homes that are back that way on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's a lot of communities, a lot of cars, a lot of people over there. The roads are backed up already. You take your child out for karate at five o'clock at night, you sit and sit and sit, and now there's going to be many, 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 many more cars on these roads. I feel that it's a danger and that it's, well, we're going to be adding about at least another half an hour to our time to get to where we need to get to, to get to 70 or to 42. And, because we're right smack in the middle. I just wanted to pose that. I have no objection to this, but I have a concern about traveling and in-town parking. I don't know if I can talk about that now because that's not involving this. Am I permitted to do that?
Actually not, because this, with this being a quasi judicial hearing.
Okay, so then.
Yeah, we're sticking, we're actually supposed to be sticking strictly to the four findings of fact.
Okay.
That he read off.
All right. Then, thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. No one else wishing to speak? I'm going to turn this over to council for a decision.
If you don't mind, this is the first submission rendering. We did work with the applicant, and I just wanted to show the second rendering so that you have that available.
No problem. Wow. All right, thank you. So again, no one else wishing to speak? I'm going to turn this over to council for their decision. Ms. Archer.
I was going to say that I believe the project meets all four findings of fact as presented, and that the proposed expansion of the existing use meets all, all find, all four of those findings with the conditions of approval.
Motion.
Okay. Like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve 2023-146-SUP with the conditions of approval.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Approval of 2023-146-SUP passes. All right, skipping right on down to staff reports. I'm going to have the town manager, please, get this sucker off.
All right. Nathaniel's gonna be pulling up a quick presentation for tonight, a little bit more formal than my normal comments, just because I wanted to take a moment to kind of celebrate the great week, a great couple of days we had last week, two weeks ago? Almost two weeks ago now, for the spring retreat that we had. As you know, we've, we've kind of gotten in a cadence of every other year, particularly right after an election when there may be new members, going in a little bit deeper dive in terms of our interactions for our, for our planning retreat in the spring. This year, we did go to New Bern as well as Little Washington, or, excuse me, Washington, some, some folks affectionately known as Little Washington, to be able to do a little bit of site reconnaissance, if you want to call it that, regarding some of the issues that you all are facing right now. So wanted to go through kind of some of the objectives that we had. Main thing, we had three days, we packed a lot of information in three days, really appreciate all of you committing to that time. I know that takes time away from your families, your businesses, you know, your, your day-to-day kind of work, but this is really a great opportunity for us to kind of detach from the kind of hustle and bustle that distracts us many times and really focus on really the, the, the work of the town here. So we really appreciate you and staff for being able to do that. Main thing, first day, was trying to get Raf Telus, our consultant, working on our upcoming update or new strategic plan, to get some time with you to do their session, participate in some of our personal session leadership training, to overall allow you all as a board to, to work better, you work best together. We had an opportunity to engage with our community leaders down there, kind of steal some ideas, get some inputs and tips and tricks with some of those projects that you're looking at, particularly with regards to the downtime revitalization and those adaptive reuse projects that we've been discussing. Get some additional training on legal issues from our excellent town attorney there, giving you great guidance in that regard, as well as just some of the administrative updates that we were able to provide you, particularly with those master plans and other things that are feeding into that strategic plan ultimately. Day one, we spent a lot of time engaging with Raf Telus, going, going through that strategic planning framework, the review of the initial input data that they had, a lot of that demographic information that is in the reports that hopefully you guys were able to take home and get a deeper dive into, but ultimately really have some good conversation around what your goals were for the strategic plan as a whole, and where the future of the town was heading, and start discussing some of what you feel is those of priorities of the strategic plan moving forward. On day two, we all do some of that leadership training. Thank you to Ms. Gill for providing the true colors assessments and other training opportunities for us to really discuss again, for this new board to be able to discuss how to work and collaborate best. Going through that, we were able to get some different strategies pulled together on how you guys can make some decisions moving forward. Big highlight of day two was our trip to downtown Washington. We were able to take a look at a lot of the revitalization that they've been able to do, the meetings that we were able to have with their downtown association folks, the public works director that worked on the rehabilitation of all the streets and utilities within the downtown, Chamber of Commerce, the other community leaders, just a great opportunity to engage with them and, and discuss kind of the, the, the trials and tribulations that making those tough decisions can go through, but ultimately see the, the, the results of the, those, those, those tough decisions. So really good, good conversation there, as well as discussing with them how they went about implementing their social district, which you all are currently considering as well. Day three was really the, I'll say the boring part for you, because we were excited about it, I hope you were as well, but a lot of classroom time felt like there, but the legal updates from the attorney in the morning there, some of the council member training, as well as going through those administrative updates. I want to say a big thank you to the staff that provided a lot of the detail and, and data for the updates to the master planning and, and other project initiatives that they've been working on, as well as I'd be remiss if I didn't say a special thank you to Dolores Gill, Heidi Holland, and Michelle Snyder, who's not here tonight, for all their work pulling all the information together, just kind of game planning the entire three days, as well as the logistics of it. So I just want to say thank you to them. But ultimately, from my perspective, I think there was a lot of really good conversation. We had a good opportunity to kind of see where, you know, help formulate that plan on where the strategic plan needs to go to be able to deliver on the division, deliver on the visions that you all have been talking about here as of late. So again, just really appreciate you all committing to doing that and taking that time away and being able to focus on the, the kind of items at hand. With that, I'll just leave it to you all for any additional comments or questions.
Well, I can just say, it was my first strategic planning meeting with the town, and I appreciated everybody's effort. We worked from the time we got up till the end of the day. It was dedicated work time, and we didn't stray from the agenda, and we worked till the very last minute. I think we went overtime on the third day. So thank you to staff and fellow council people, people for committing to doing this, and it's a great effort. Thank you. And, and the legal update part was not the most boring part of the day.
I also like to express my gratitude and gratefulness for having this opportunity to spend time with the fellow board members and staff also. It was a great learning experience, it's been my first time around, so I really appreciate the time that was spent teaching us and training us. I really got a lot of the legal training that was presented to us on this particular occasion, and I think it was very important. It was awesome to be able to visit other cities such as Washington and New Bern to see how they did certain things that we're interested in doing. So this was vital and very important for us to perceive for our future strategic. So this was vital and very important for us to perceive for our future strategic planning. And I think mostly too, to be able to have time away from my family, to be able to concentrate with our team and to be able to glean from that for our future planning. So I salute this opportunity and this training. Thank you.
Mr. Casey.
Thank you. I want to echo those sentiments. Prior council meeting, I wasn't here because I was at a five-day training for UNC School of Government for elected officials. And the one thing I learned, and the reason I'm telling you this story, the one thing I learned, our council, we don't necessarily always agree. And sometimes we, none of us agree on anything. But we get the, we work, we work well together. And a lot of other communities, a lot of other municipalities, they definitely don't agree, but they don't work well together. And they don't, and which is not to the benefit of the community. So spending time like we did two weeks ago, getting to know each other on a personal level and understanding, you know, their concerns may be different than mine, but it's good to hear and talk through those things. And we still may not agree to, we may agree to disagree a lot of times. We still, we still work well together. We respect each other. We treat each other with integrity. And things like what we do, this retreat, is what helps us be the people we are up here.
Ms. Paul. Yeah, Andrew.
I wanted to thank everyone who made it happen. I echo a lot of what was said, but more specifically about actually traveling to these other towns. It makes such a difference when you're actually boots on the ground seeing how other municipalities are handling things. It really sunk in, and just an example I wanted to provide was seeing how Washington handled their main street renovation and actually getting to talk to them when we did the roundtable discussion, pick their brains about what worked and what didn't, kind of gave me a much better idea of what we're up against with these sorts of decisions. And I just feel like that's something that translates better when you're there in person and you get to kind of have those conversations. So thank you.
So I want to say something on this in three parts. First and foremost, I want to thank Rich, you and your staff for putting this together. It's needed for where we are at, at this time and place in here in Clayton and being in the positions that we are from a leadership standpoint. Secondly, it's extremely important for individuals to know and note and understand that these things that we go to like this, as Andrew stated, it lets us see their downtown. It lets us see their social district. It lets us see their infrastructure, how they've gotten things and they put it underground. It gives us a vision, and not only that, it allows for us to not possibly make some mistakes that was made in the past. And with those mistakes, it becomes money, taxpayers' money. So having our eyes on those things are extremely important in being able to lay out a strategic plan that's going to get us to where we need to go by seeing things is extremely important. And last, I just want to thank the council because at the end of the day, people have to understand, a lot of council members were, as we sat through these, just going to say some grueling hours at times, they had to go back into the rooms later on that evening and continue to work. A lot of people don't understand that. And at the end of the day, also just being away from your family. If anybody understands about being away from your family, it might be three days, it might be three hours, but you're still away from it. That's a self-sacrifice that everybody up here takes, and I appreciate that. So again, kudos to you and your staff. And I look forward to actually us putting to practice some of the things that we learned.
Yeah, thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Thanks. Town attorney.
No report.
Town clerk.
No report.
All right, happy... Chief, where you at? Got you back up here again, sir, Chief Rains.
Mayor Proten, members of council, David Rains, fire chief. So just to make you aware, two opportunities. One's a grant that the fire department will be applying for. The second one is a grant that we have been awarded. I'll speak specific about the grant we're applying for first. So the fire department is submitting for an assistance to firefighter grant references an AFG grant. The AFG is a program administered by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And the primary purpose of the AFG grant is to enhance the safety of firefighters and to the public by providing direct financial assistance to the department. The AFG program grants to support projects that improve the readiness and capabilities of the fire department and emergency services. This can include funding for the purchase of equipment, training vehicles, as well as investments in facilities, technology, and technology to enhance overall firefighting and emergency capabilities. The grants are awarded through a competitive process, and eligible organizations can apply for the funding during the open application period. The AFG program aims to address the evolving needs of the firefighting community and enhance the ability of the fire department to protect the public and respond to various emergency situations effectively. For this AFG grant, the fire department is requesting thermal imaging cameras with a total ask of approximately $100,000. These cameras provide benefits would include enhanced visibility in low visibility conditions, personnel and victim locations, early fire detection, search and rescue operations, as many as many other benefits. If awarded this grant, our cost will be 10% or approximately $10,000. So that's the AFG grant, which closes out on March the 8th, and we're actively working to have our application completed for that. As far as the grant that we have recently been awarded, the Clayton Fire Department has been awarded a $15,000 North Carolina General Assembly directed grant. The North Carolina General Assembly appropriated funds to Johnston County for the purpose of grants to voluntary and municipal fire departments for the purpose of acquiring new equipment, gear, or materials for use by the respective departments. And so all fire departments in Johnston County have received or have been awarded this $15,000 grant that we didn't apply for. It was just, it was through a county, a county grant, I reckon you say that. And so through that, we were awarded this. With this funding, we intend to replace our high-pressure airbags, which are used in a variety of technical rescue events, including vehicle extrication, trench rescue, industrial accidents, and many other technical rescue operations. These bags will replace our current bags, which are estimated to be 19 years old and have far exceeded their life, expected lifecycle. And with that, I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the chief? I just got a comment. It seemed like the other day we swore you in, and now you got grant money coming. Oh, man, it was right on time. So hey, I guess you talk about hitting the ground running. You hit the ground running, and you then flew off, so appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Well, hopefully I'll be back here soon with another grant opportunity we're just waiting for to open up.
That's what I'm talking about. I like money.
All right. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Any comments from council? All right, I'm going to take a motion for us to go into closed session to discuss purchasing of, wait a minute. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Any informal discussion or public comment?
Any topic?
Yes, sir. Any topic. Got three minutes. Yes, sir. Have at it. Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is John Scarpo, 1304 Neuse Ridge Road, Neuse Ridge Drive, sorry, Clayton. You all know me. You see me here every time we have a meeting. And I'm beginning to really like each and every one of you on an individual basis. I only have two things to bring up today. One is that there is, in the town of Clayton right now, a trash problem, roadside trash. And I'd like to tell you that I have a neighbor, my next-door neighbor and a friend of hers, who are each week going down Glen Laurel Road voluntarily with plastic bags and collecting the refuse by themselves. Now, I don't know if the town board can do anything about that, if we can spend some money to get somebody to come and clean up the roadways or anything. But I was wondering if you would entertain an application to give these two ladies some kind of commendation because they're out there every single week cleaning up the trash that is left by people who just don't care about the neighborhood as much as we do. That's one thing. We'll leave that to the side. The second thing is something that I think you all should be familiar with. I'm standing here at this podium addressing you, and I think that you can hear me, and I pretty much can hear you. But when you're sitting back there, you can't hear a darn thing. It comes across as a mumble, and it is terrible. This is a public forum. The people who come here are hoping to hear what their representatives and the board is going to say, and the people who are addressing for variances and things like that. We should be able to hear back there and be able to understand what's going on and respond. Sometimes we might not even be disagreeing if we just knew what people were saying. So I don't know what you can do about it, but I would suggest that this board seek some kind of a resolution in terms of maybe just putting speakers in the back so that the people in the back can hear. And that's all I have to say for today. I'll see you next time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to respond to those right quick. I guess I can because I'm Mayor Proten. So the speaker thing, we can't take care of, probably Mr. Nathaniel. We can take care of the speaker.
Yes, sir. We actually put in a service request. They're coming on March 12th to fix that.
Look at here. We so quick, man. We got some good people here. The other, the other thing that you spoke about, if you could give the names to Nathaniel. We've had some discussion in the past. You might want to bring that back up to not only those that you're talking about, but just certain citizens who are doing things throughout Clayton, maybe coming up with some type of certificate award or something like that. So we will look into that. If you could give him the names to those individuals, there's possibly something we might, might be able to do here too. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanted to add another thing. So last year, the town staff and the community helped organize the Clayton cleanup during Earth Day. This year, we're having that again on April the 20th. And obviously, you need to clean up more than just one day a year, right? But it's something to kind of educate and organize and educate the community. So I think we definitely would like to get those two people's names and maybe have them be an active participant and maybe even a little bit more with that because that is a problem in the community. The other thing regarding the hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nathaniel, but we do have some devices that people can use to plug into. And we're going to put some, a notification by the door. So in the future, until I guess it gets fixed, you can have earphones or...
That is correct. We do have assisted listening, listening devices.
Do we have a sign up yet, or is it...
No, yeah, we, it's not been delivered yet.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All righty. I'm going to entertain a motion to discuss a purchasing of real property.
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
So moved?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.